And with our screenings that Corning School Health does, that data also goes into the computer by the nurses. And with the screenings that we do, that's height, weight, blood pressure, vision screening, hearing screening. We do scoliosis check, and so they're having to put all of that in the computer in addition to their office visits. Also, anytime there is a referral with the screenings, or if they just recommend a child, go for a physician follow-up, depending on what happened at school, if it was an injury, they follow up with every child, with every parent to make certain that the need was met. And if it's not, then we see what we can do to help with that need for the children. They work with the, they're basically the face of healthcare for their schools. They work with the community agencies, they work with the physician's office, with the parents, with the child. And they work with the schools, you know, with the teachers and the administration at the schools, just to make certain that everything works out. Because sometimes you have kids, if it wasn't for their screen in the school, they couldn't attend school. And so they're there, you know, for that reason to kind of help that out. And so they're that liaison. They make certain that all of our students are compliant with immunizations, and if not, then we help address that. Healthy School Teams, they head up their Healthy School Teams. With the Healthy School Teams, they complete the CDC School Health Index, which is basically a needs assessment. It helps them to determine the needs of the school, and that, then they come up with a plan. There's a lot of other people in their school that will, that's on the team. They develop the plan and initiate it. And Rich View's plan this year, which I really like, they're doing a sensory hallway for kids. So I think that's a neat idea. But they do a lot of different things. It's not all related to just medical. We look at the whole child and try to address their needs in a holistic manner, the best that we can. They also, bloodborne pathogens, we have to do annual training. The nurses, they're responsible for getting that distributed and making certain that everyone in their school has received that training. The collaboration logistics, and that's a big part of what they do. With Corning School Health, we bring a lot of programs into the schools, and they're working on the schedules with the administration to determine what days we can come. The administration will move around class schedules so we can have certain people come in. And one of those is Well Child. Well Child, they come in and do EPSD and T screens, which is basically like an annual checkup for children. They'll come in, no charge to the students, no charge to our school district, and do physical exams. And if there is a need, they help them with that. If they have, they need glasses, what's great about Well Child is if there's, the students will get to pick out their glasses that day, they will go make the glasses, then they will bring them back to the school for the child. Whereas some agencies that we've used before, which is fantastic, it's still pretty much charged to the student, but it's dependent upon the parents going in and picking up the glasses, and sometimes we know that doesn't always happen. So that's to kind of help bridge that gap. And so that's just one of the programs that the nurses do. And I'll get down to a few more programs here in just a little bit. We also help with the health promotion. One of them that we're doing tomorrow is we are combining Walk to School Day, Morning Mile, and we had a grant, Fuel Up to Play 60 at Lamar. And so we're combining kind of all of those as a kickoff tomorrow morning. So you all are welcome to come. We're going to have the students, they're going to be dropped off at the road. They're going to be dressed up in black and white, or dressed up like cows, because we're promoting dairy. They're going to be walking out. Mr. Urban's going to bring some cows for the children to see. We're going to have.
I'm going to bring red and white cows instead of the black.
Whatever, whatever.
The black and whites can't come, so I have to bring the red and white.
I don't think the children will mind. Definitely be a topic for conversation. But we're going to have, since we are promoting dairy, the nutrition department, they're actually going to be outside with the grab and go breakfast. So we'll give all the kids outside, administration's going to be out. We're distributing bananas, we're doing water. They're going to have samples of Carfay's for the kids to try, and it's going to be just a lot of fun out there. So if y'all would like to come and walk with the kids a little bit, we would love to have you, seven forty-five to eight fifteen. And so the nurses help with a lot of programs like that, and that's just one of them. We help with health fairs. Donna at Westview does an amazing job with health fairs. She does, she does a lot of activities for parent engagement, and they're all pretty neat. EpiPen's AED, they're doing some monthly checks, because we want to make certain that the equipment works if we should ever need it. And so they're responsible for that as well. Some of the programs, you see some of the numbers down here, food bag distribution, since the nurses also do. So twice a month, they're distributing food bags. Last year, it was a little over eighty-six hundred. So that's eighty-six hundred, you know, and there's more than one meal in a bag that kids are getting. If it wasn't for the nurses distributing those, that they wouldn't have. And that goes home with them on weekends. Second Harvest helps us with that, and also some local churches. Thanksgiving boxes, we gave all a hundred Thanksgiving boxes. It had a complete meal, a gift certificate for turkey. Taste Days, now that is a fun program, and you all, I would invite you all to come and help out and volunteer with us if you would like. It's a nutrition program. Every school K through four is part of this. We'll do five schools in one month, five schools the next month. And what we do is we alternate, letting them taste test different fruits and vegetables. UT Extension, they provide the fruits and vegetable course. They try them in their natural states, so there's no dip or anything added to them. The first time that we did this, we started off with blueberries last year. I thought blueberry, you know, it's an easy fruit. Everybody's tried blueberries. I was, it was very eye-opening for me, because there were some kids that didn't even know what a blueberry was. They'd never seen one, didn't know what it was, never tasted one. So again, that was very eye-opening for me. And so what we try to do with our program is just make some small changes and try to make some small habits that actually will turn into large results, so the kids, you know, will be healthy as they're growing up. We had sugar snap peas. There was this young man at Silver Springs, loved his heart. He could be like a poster boy for sugar snap peas. He asked for second and thirds, and on the way out the door, asked for something to take with him. So, and it's just fun watching the kids. About every kid does try. We do have incentives, a sticker and little fruit erasers. And it's amazing how much of incentive that can actually be. We do check for allergies, and we do have passive permissions for parents to make certain that it's okay for their kids to do it. That's always a fun day. If you're interested, I'd be more than happy to send the schedule out to you. I'd love for you all to come out and hang out with us and hand some, give some fruits and vegetables. Water bottle refill stations. Libwell, Washington, they donated through a grant, a water bottle refill station at Silver Springs. And then this year, they came and distributed water bottles to every student at Silver Springs. Because we're putting water bottles in, water bottle refill stations in, they need water bottles to fill up. And that way, that's going to encourage them to increase their water intake and decrease the sugary drinks. We also have purchased sixteen more water bottle refill stations, so that every school in our system will have at least one. And by the end of the year, they'll be installed, and everyone will have a water bottle refill station. Screenings, last year, close to two thousand students that we were screened. We screened pre-K, kindergarten, seventh grade, fourth, sixth, eighth, and ninth grade. And again, that data the nurses are going to input into the computer. The Well Child visits, so we're eleven hundred students that receive an annual visit that may not have received one otherwise. The way the parents would have to take them, you know, is down here at school. And with Well Child, they actually get blood work done, and any type of referrals that's needed, that's also addressed. Dental visits. The nurses, they schedule, the buses will take students to the Washington County Health Department to get dental visits. Again, this is no charge to the school system. And the students will go, get their teeth cleaned, cavities, anything that needs to be addressed. They take care of that. It's best kids that may not have had that otherwise. And so again, the nurses, they're, you know, scheduling that. A lot of logistics, you know, for them. And there's eight hundred and eighty-two visits with that last year. Dental sealants, Northeast Regional Health Department, they come in and do that. It's about three thousand sealants that were put on the students' teeth last year. And what the sealants do, there's an area that looks like it could possibly turn into a cavity. They put the sealant on, and that's going to hopefully prevent a cavity. And something that we're doing this year is silver diamine fluoride, which I'm excited about, to where if there is a small cavity, then they can put this fluoride on it, and it helps to fix it. It keeps it from getting larger. And there's no drilling, there's no having to go to the dentist. And if y'all had a toothache, you all know how bad that is. And we all know that sometimes kids get the care that they need, and sometimes they don't. So this is just another way for us to kind of bridge that gap and to serve the students. Blue clinics, we do that. Washington County Health Department comes in for the students. CBS comes in for the staff. First responder training, we trained a hundred and forty first responders for the schools last year. We do AED drills. Again, we want to make certain people know what they're doing, should we ever have a need. Fit for Success, it's a program that we also do. With that program, what we do is basically we fit students with whatever they need to be successful. It's primarily shoes and clothing. We will also do backpacks, provide anything that they need for school. So eight hundred and seventy-one students last year received new shoes and new clothes. We get that funding through United Way. We also do a Christmas giveaway, it's an annual giveaway. The nurses work, the guidance counselors, they identify students that maybe be, maybe be in need. And then the schools, we're also students, toe shoe carnival. And the kids get to go in there and pick out the shoes they want. Again, if y'all would like to come and help us out, that's a really fun day. You all can walk around, pick out shoes. I'm very happy to give you dates for that. So we always enjoy that. We take about ten students, ten to fifteen, depend on funding from each school, and let them do that, and they're just going to come pick out whatever they need. You can see the education that we do. The actual plan of this year, you see the telemedicine, we've incorporated storybook trails. And that right there incorporates physical activity and also literacy. And again, we try to look at the whole child and do as much as we can. Asthma screening, we're going to pile that this year, just for fourth grade. We're going to try that in three schools to see how that works. Water campaign in the spring, if we can, or if, there's Amy, right now, we can't really utilize her as well as we would like, because Goods Creek is so busy, so she's pretty much having to be there most of the time. And if you can look at the numbers on the back of your sheet, you can see that they're, you know, around eight hundred visits per just in one month. So, but she's going to do some water education with the students. She's going to dip the kindergarteners, and we have water bottles that we're going to give every kindergarten student whenever she does the teaching with that, to, again, to encourage a healthy lifestyle. Also, this semester, she's working on doing some hand washing classes, to kind of, you know, teach the kids, wash the hands, use hand sanitizer, keep your hands to yourself, basically, cover your cough, cover your sneeze, trying to be as proactive as we can. Car wars, so a lot, we have to be people coming in and, you know, doing things with tobacco. We've been doing some education with vaping as well. And those are just, again, a few of the things that we do. And you all know as well as I do, I can't put everything down that we do on a piece of paper. And all this right here is just worked on a piece of paper. These ladies back here, they work so hard. And just this right here doesn't do justice on what they do with the outcomes. They're decreasing absenteeism. They're supporting an increase in the student, their performance. Kids can come to school that otherwise couldn't come to school. And also, if you look at the return to class rates, they are positively affecting that budget. With the nurses, this program started in two thousand. They have never received a pay increase since then, but their duties keep getting more and more and more. I've talked to Brad. We've come up with a multi-tier plan to increase their pay just a little bit. And this is not for me, this is not for the supervisors, this is for the nurses that's in the clinic. And if y'all would like, I do have our plan with us. I could share with you if you would like, or we can talk about it this other night. But it is something I am going to ask for you all to do, because these ladies behind me, I would not be doing them justice if I didn't ask for an increase in pay for them, because they've worked very hard. They love these kids, and that's the reason that they're here. They are not here because of the pay. They're here because they love these kids, they want to serve. They really have a passion to serve. So we're appreciative that we have the opportunity to serve. Do you have any questions for me?
The plan is something that we intend to take through the usual both the finance committee and the chairman to see if we can make it up to the end.
I just wanted to say, I like your purpose, eliminate health-related barriers so that teachers can teach and students can learn. That is so true, coming from a former teacher. You don't know how much you're appreciated. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto to what she just said. We appreciate each and every one of the programs you do for our kids. One of my concerns, and we see it in the news every day, is the vaping issues. You mentioned that just a minute ago. What else can we do to tell these kids that vaping is harmful to you?
We will provide, and we have some education that we've sent out with the American Heart Association. They're, Jenny Kess, she works with us. She's provided us resources for elementary, for middle school, for high school. We're getting those out to the nurses. They're getting those to the teachers to use. Today, I believe it was at Boone, we have Melanie Ison. She is, she works with Sullivan County with the Prevention Coalition, but she has a child at Silver Springs and also at Boone. So she is coming in and talking with the students about the dangers of that. The, I know Erin at Boone, she is working with her Healthy School Team to try to do some education. They're going to put some, in the cafeteria during, not during, but during lunch, put up some information about vaping, some statistics that the kids, you know, can read. Also, they're working on doing a parent information seminar for after class, for after school, to get the parents in there, to kind of educate them. You know, and the kids, you know, they're smart. They put them in places that you can't, you can't search. You can't find them, you can't do anything about it. So again, a lot of it's going to be education for us. You know, I always say that, you know, kids are fragile, lives not developed, they don't understand consequences. They don't really understand the dangers, you know, of what they're doing.
When you see on the news, all those people across the country dying.
The CDC is recommending for people not to use them.
Thank you for.
You're welcome.
Once again, thank you for your presentation. Dr. Flannery, you know, if we're going to address this through the budget, you know, to try to get them more money, I think it'd be a good idea for Ms. Wagner to go before the commission and give the same presentation. Let them realize, this is what these ladies are doing in our school system. Sending these kids back to class and the list of stuff they're doing. And I mean, that means very good, very informative, and maybe it'll help them realize, when we go, you know, with our budget, and they see there's an increase in the nursing, they understand.
Are you up for kind of commissioning?
I will do whatever we'd like for me to do.
What if you start with the ATW committee?
Well, there's no sense in making her do it three times. You know, I mean, they decide to go to the full commission and let them all here.
Now, I want to ask for a couple more physicians too, so. We're just not even telemedicine. You know, we're going to evaluate this year and see how it goes, and then we'll address that.
Ms. Wagner, the whole point of that is to get there, get them on board with the idea, so that it can go forward.
I understand that. But, you know, then she's going to have to go to the budget commission, get the same spell. Then she's going to have to go to the full commission, let's just send her to the full commission, and let's.
You don't understand. She's proud of everything she's saying. She'd be glad to do it three times, I think.
She can do it once and get the point across, I'm sure.
Ms. Wagner, thank you so much. I didn't have a clue what our school nurses did until I come to your committee meeting on the strategic plan. You impressed me, and again, and I'm very impressed. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. We'll be together. I'll get in front of you.
Thank you.
Well, hey, just be patient with us nurses. Just one moment, I think you might be impressed by this. There's some really remarkable artwork in the road in Manhattan, Fall Branch. Principal Merriman, what's going on with this?
It's my pleasure to introduce both the teacher and the student who came tonight. We originally thought, Board, that this was happening on Thursday. I think some of our students had planned on piecing out for fall break. So we do have some Fall Branchers in the house, and they got stuck behind a tractor on the way here. Mr. Flannery, you're going to have to tell your friends, Keith, stay open. But we're, we're happy to be here, and it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Amber Pugh and Victoria Page. Victoria is an eighth grade student at Fall Branch, and Ms. Pugh is our art teacher, and she teaches all grades, K through eight. This is close to my heart, because as many of you know, you visited my music room when I was a music teacher before I was a principal. I'm exceptionally proud of what Ms. Pugh does at Fall Branch. She is right now applying for three grants. The Moss Foundation, which is going to bring mosaics into our building. She also applied for the Quest Grant this year to get digital art into her classroom. And she's also just completed the Cardinal Walk, which is split between all four related arts teachers, and we made thirty-one hundred dollars on that. So very pleased with the direction. And just like our mission says, we're trying to develop all students, and that includes through the academic lens and also through the related arts end. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pugh and Victoria Page.
I'm Victoria Page, from Fall Branch, of course. And for the past two weeks, me and my class have been working on this one of these parts we've seen before. Over the course of the project, we were trying to develop our understanding more on respect. Not just that we can respect other people and property, but also their opinions and, yeah. The project was pretty fun to do. We got to thought painting.
May we ask some questions?
Yes.
Am I to understand that each student made a puzzle piece?
Yes.
And they represent themselves through these puzzle pieces? How did that work?
It's a representation of how they feel, of how they're experiencing.
And all this originated with the epicist?
Yes.
Which piece is yours?
This one right here.
And how do you feel about your puzzle? What is your?
It's a representation of the respect that I can give to others and their opinions, and just how they feel.
This piece down here on the bottom, it's got a part of a T. Is that somebody that likes Tennessee?
The bottom part.
I don't know who did that, but I heard.
What will happen to this piece of work?
I'm hoping maybe that it might be able to be displayed in the halls somewhere.
We, we have some of the world's great artworks out here in this hallway, but we don't have any original art. Would it be permitted if we were to display Fall Branches over for the remainder of this school year here at the central office?
I think that would be all right.
I don't want to just claim to put you on the spot. If the other students feel strongly that it ought to be at your school, wouldn't it? We'd be proud to have it here this year, and then take it back down to Fall Branch again. Certainly, you may want to display it a while longer at your school, but we'd be very proud to have it here.
I think we can arrange it.
The idea behind our project was to represent our epic word of the month, respect. So we had many conversations, because in our society today, especially children, they don't understand the level of respect that you have for opinions that are not exactly your opinion, but we have to respect that that's also a person, and they have the right to have an opinion and a choice in their life. So this is what we've developed from that. And this painting in the middle of the people is our painting that represents respect, based from a famous artist, Keith Haring. He does multiple paintings on, and he picks a word, and that's what that picture represents to him. But this is what the Fall Branch creators helped.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Where would you like me to place this?
Rock, you don't want to take it back home a little while longer?
Do you want me to?
I'll put it in your office.
I'll take it back.
Board members, take your drop box. You have a permutation, a draft of a five-year master plan. Give you some time to lay eyes on that, should you be here to do so. It was my hope and intention to recommend that you adopt it tonight. I cannot do so. While your work is done, the committee's work is done, the words are there, the wishes and intent are there. The format does not specifically meet what the state board describes. There's no work for the board to have to do, or the committees to do, but the committee chairman will have to do some tweaking. We'll use that word, some tweaking, writing objectives, and we have to tie each of the goals back to the state board's master plan. And it's not been done uniformly. But at this time, you have in front of you what has been done. I understand you've had some really great goal committee meetings. I know mine on funding was, we had a great conversation. A lot of good talks, good comments about that. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I cannot recommend adoption, but I would invite questions, either tonight or as you look over it in the next several days. And we should have that ready for your final approval at the November. Any comments on that before we move forward?
If you would allow me, I've got several I'd like us to dive into just a little bit, unless we'd like to revisit this in another call meeting. But I've just got some I'd like to talk about. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look through it or not, but I took some time to write some questions down. On the goal number one, to improve student achievement, I noticed that Power School Performance Analytics, and I shortened that because I got tired of writing. But that particular program was named three times during that particular goal. I know we talked about that at the funding part, you know, during the budget season, and it didn't get passed. I'd like for us to revisit that. Do we know how much that would cost, that Power School? How much? And that also was talked about in goal five, two more times. With that being said, eighty thousand dollars, but our five-year plan mentions this particular program at five different occasions on two separate goals. I would challenge ourselves to find a way to fund this eighty thousand, because to me, if we're going to be successful, and we've already seen through our last sets of tests and everything, we are doing what it takes to be successful. But this must be another tool that several of these committees, or two different committees on two different goals, came up with that would help us achieve our higher goals. So I don't know if anybody wants to put anything in on that, but I just thought.
What two goals did you set out like?
Goal one and goal five. It's called Power School Performance Analytics. And I'm sure it's, it's another thing or two, too, that it shows, and the strategies you'll mention, you'll see mentioned in that, in those two separate goals. It's actually called Power School Performance Matters Assessment Analytics. And could we allow Dr. Kite to talk about that, or do you, do you have, you under, I mean?
In layman's terms, it's like a GPS in your phone. It tells you where you are, how much further you need to go, what direction you need to go. It's a common formative assessment, a benchmark assessment. It's in common use in other school systems in this area. But we are the only school system in northeast Tennessee that does not purchase a common formative assessment. We polled at our last state council meeting, we went around the room, we polled each other. We're, we do it in-house, we make our own. On the other hand, it's the price of a classroom teacher. And I can assure you, it'll be on the wish list as a budget. Dr. Kite will not allow otherwise.
Well, I'm just saying, it's mentioned five times in our goals, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we think so highly of them. I think it's definitely something we need to, we need to tackle. Or take it off our goals, if we're not, you know what I'm saying? I mean, all the other goals we're either reaching, or at least on the way to, but.
If it's something we don't have currently, how can we be using it to?
It's not, it's actually showing.
Educate student learning.
It actually shows on, yeah, the strategies, and then the implementation, it says cost. And that's where this performance, Power School Performance Analytics comes in.
But if it's, you know, if we don't have it, how can it be a part of our strategies? That's why.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, it's saying that that's what we need to get to, to get our goal met. We need to put it on the list for the budget this year for our next year. Budget for this year's set.
If I gather our last budget, we won't get enough. So, where do you rank it as an importance overall, above everything else we need? I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know how to, you know?
That's about the hardest thing to do, is ranking. You're just asking me what my... You're about to open a cab, weren't you? If you were asking what my biggest need is, it's adding some money to supplement, to pay to our administrators. There are a hundred and forty-four school systems in this state and we rank number one out of twenty, because that's-
So, how is this, so?
That's incredible as well. I mean, if we really want to address test scores, that's important.
Well, I'm just, on what you're saying, either we do it or we take it off.
I mean-
Can we live without it? I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I know, I know what the ones I've been on, and I'm sure the rest of these right here, the committee members that met, I mean, we worked hard on our two. I'm sure everybody else did as well. And if you come up in two different sets of committees, and Dr. Kite was the chair of one, that, with Jason, Donna Riddle, Matt Combs, Cindy Hayes, and then the other one was Dr. Holcomb, Annette, Gary McAllister, Dr. Kite, Dr. Keys, Dr. Myers, Jerry Whitaker. I mean, those are not the same people sit on both of those committees, and they both said that they were important. So, I don't think we need to wait till the next budget season to come around. I do think it needs to be visited sooner rather than later, whether we can find the cost savings to get it done or whatever, but I think if we're gonna help meet these goals, and we've actually worked on these goals, or we shouldn't have spent the time working on these goals, then I think we should have, we should at least take it seriously. But I just want to talk about that.
So, that is a test that we will be adding to?
No, it's a, it's a series-
Instrument.
Instrument that they use to see what you're lacking, I guess, to do good on your test.
And how do you know that? It's tests, correct?
It feels like it's an assessment.
It's a test, and the assessment is next.
But you can't always know it's not how it speaks.
So, we have star three sixty that we already use. What else?
Star three sixty is what we use because we can't afford anything better.
So, this will replace the star three sixty?
It would, it would go a long way for replacing the common formative assessment that we created.
So, it would just add another test?
If we had to withdraw, the in-house made common formative assessment, in place it would be scoreable with Pearson Part.
And this one's done by who?
I think it's Pearson Part, but it's an extension of Power School. It works with Power School.
I'll say, you know, this is the five-year master plan. You know, this is the things we need to be trying to strive to get done in five years, you know, to move forward to do. So, I mean, I'm okay with it being on there, we don't have it implemented or whatever. It's all for moving to do that. I don't think it's something we have to do this year. You know, something to visit in the next budget, maybe.
Is it eighty thousand per year?
Since Power School is renewed annually, I would say this is as well.
I agree. We just heard how much the nurses need more money, and I just think we need to put more money into people instead of things like that.
Per year? That's annual, per year, but it's not just a one-time buy-in.
You can make it part of your budget, and it'd be, you know, every year it'd be in our budget.
And if you keep on doing everything else you're doing, that's reoccurring expense. So, if you get recurring money, but we all saw the first budget proposal this year, and I guess I intentionally forgot what that first round, how much out of budget was it?
One point eight million.
One point eight million, so this would make it one point eight eight million out, if it were included. Jason, you and I talked the other day about cost savings. Every time we come to the board meeting, we want to spend more money that was not in the original budget. Focus in relation, we need to live within the budget. And the needs, yes, sir. One point eight million dollars worth of this, just this year. I wish we could pay every minute of it. I wish we could give our principals a raise, our nurses, our central office staff, everybody needs a raise. Money has been the biggest issue since I've been on the board in two thousand and four. Operating money, everyday operating money, to help our students succeed more and more. And we get told, no, no, no. To stop right now and spend eighty thousand out of the budget that's only three months in, I just don't see it. I'm sorry. I just don't see it. I understand it being on the goal. A lot of things on this that they're gonna cost money to do. When we get the money, we can do them. We just can't come to every meeting and spend more money that's not in the budget. And I guess we could if we get Mr. Hale to go along with it. Can you find eighty thousand, Mr. Hale? Will you hurry?
Well, not right now. We've got a bunch of teachers that wasn't in the budget, so-
For the rest of our case.
I know what you're saying, though. I mean, it obviously is important, but it...
The only thing you could do is take it out of the thumb balance.
But there's a limit on that.
We're already at one point eight million on the budget for the balance this year.
You know what I'm saying? How do, I mean, how do we know? I mean, that might be an ignorant question, but we got all these goals. Do we have like a A-list and a B-list?
That's kind of your job.
That's why I'm asking, do we have that?
Well, would you have something that tears up?
No, I'm not talking about, yeah, I know that, but I'm just saying like, do we have a, do we really have a list of, I mean, serious, like, here's the stuff like this that we really want to work towards getting, that's not, because like you said a minute ago, you can put a hundred things on it, you're never gonna get to a hundred of them. So, do we classify? You know, do we have a real list like that, that we classify this as number one important thing we're gonna get done next year, or whatever? Do we have?
Budget time, hold it around. I'll come to you with a problem or a chance, please. But the budget that leaves here is up to the governor.
And then once they turn it down, where does the list go? Do we just start all over?
It comes right back to you when you start.
Cut.
Hopefully, it doesn't get turned down. If you send a balanced budget, they won't blink.
Yeah.
But it repeats itself.
Yeah, last year, we spent how much time, spent how much time waiting on this?
Been a lot of years like that, Jason.
Did you have other questions?
Yes, sir. Goal four, says, and I love this goal, by the way, I don't know who was on this committee, but the goal, probably wasn't. The goal four, it says promote and teach work ethic. I think that's one. I think it's, not that any of them are bad goals, but I thought it was ironic that some things we don't, like, like the Farm Bureau days at, at Gray Fairgrounds, one school could go, one school couldn't. I understand that's a, a kind of a, I don't know how to exactly resolve that, but I don't understand how, like on cattle shows and different things, agriculture-wise, if you can't learn work ethic in agriculture, then you don't have it in you. And I would like to see us at least revisit that either in policy or somewhere where we can come to happy agreement to where we can live with something on, on that particular problem to make it across the board. Could we do, do you think there's some room to work something out on that?
Cost and trouble, the climate apps, chronic apps, and D isn't participating in these things. Just ten minutes ago, I got a text from an assistant principal, Crockett, she was surprised, they've got their second twenty, first twenty-day attendance came in at ninety-five percent. That's an all-time record for Crockett. And that's because that principal is holding their feet to the fire.
And we can't undermine that. We can't micromanage a principal and what they're doing at their school, because they are being held accountable for what's going on at their school. But I applaud them. That's not an easy decision to make.
Yeah, that's hard. When you tell those kids, I'm living over, they can't go participate in cattle shows, that's hard. I've been there. But ninety-five percent is a good number for Crockett.
The problem is its consistency across the county is the problem. That's the, that's what I get the complaint about. Well, they went, why can't we go? That's what I get the complaint about. I get the principal wanting them to be there, but this principal says yes, and this principal says no, it's the same thing. So, that, that's the problem I have is the consistency from school to school.
Isn't that because of the, one school's got worse absenteeism than the other? Is that why that is?
It's not the same at every school, yes.
Right, so I mean, that's why, I mean, I agree with you, but at the same time.
You've had some hundred percent attendance days.
Really?
Big as they are. You might let them know from places. Down west, you, a hundred percent, I guess they write a book about us.
That's funny, didn't we add, what was it we added to our diplomas a couple of years ago, workforce development or?
Work ethic.
Work ethic.
Work ethic. Do you have certain tendencies you have to deal with? In fact, we're up to seven different things we can add to a diploma now. You got right up, can you see that thing?
What are some of them?
Dr. Keys, if I could, but trouble you. Aren't we up to seven different stickers we can put on our diploma now?
None.
Nine?
It's none.
Where are they?
Let me pull up the board policy and I'll tell you.
Okay.
Got it.
Most of these are state manned.
Sorry, I was showing Philip here that TSBA got a dashboard with all the lovely job marketing of it.
Phil's looking for jobs.
She was just educating me. Which is what, we're in the business, huh?
There is open for you, actually.
Although it is difficult for me, but.
It's over.
Well, she's looking.
No, go ahead. I think we ought to ask Mitch and our Jared what happened. I'm curious. You're a school board member right now, ain't you? Jared, would you get up and-
Are we done with this?
No, I, it may be under.
We're waiting on Ashley.
I've got it.
Wait, you've got four.
Okay, you wanna wait? We're gonna wait, Jared, sorry.
Students should be recognized at graduation ceremonies for the following achievements: honors, state honors, state distinction, district distinction, tri-star, scholar, students receiving a Tennessee seal of bolliteracy, students volunteering ten hours or more of community service each semester, students receiving a gold or platinum medal on the NCRC, which is our workies, and students graduating with a district developed work ethic distinction.
I counted eight.
How many?
Was it nine? Okay.
None.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chad. Goal five, was it PPA, I shortened this time, Power School Performance Analytics, was mentioned twice in goal five. It also said, you know, talking about ideas of how to, let's just scroll to goal five right here. It also talks about teachers that want to go back to school to get their degree. And I just wondered, is there a grant? Or how does this work in other systems? Not that I'm saying we need to spend this money, but I'm intrigued by it, of how, how does, do the other school systems around us, do they pay for people's teaching, go back to get their masters or doctorate or?
It's not uncommon.
Do we do anything like that?
We did one time, I think, one year. It was paid money. Mr. Gangrel has a better memory of that than her.
Hundred thousand. They could, teachers could go back to school and get a certain amount paid back. We did it for one year, then we cut it out of budget, when it was already in the budget.
Never done it before or since.
Does, do our area schools around us do something?
It's not uncommon, schools around the state that have need, I think some of the big systems do subsidized degrees. I don't know if any of our neighbors do. They do, I'm just unaware of that. I don't hear about that.
I mean, you just, I just thought that that was something we could visit. I didn't know if there's any grants into things like that, or I'm-
We've done a lot of people in graduate school.
Do we?
Yes.
It was very well received the year we did it, and people were very appreciative.
I don't imagine one of them pursuing doctors now. That was unheard of, not ten years ago now. I wonder if we've got fifteen or twenty people pursuing doctors.
I just never, no, go ahead. I was getting ready to move on to something else, but-
I was gonna say that it was pulled out of the budget, it was well-received one year, and it's a great program. One of my issues with it is there's a lot of people that have gone to school on their own. Teachers, most of them have paid for their own college unless they had grants or scholarships. A lot of them have paid for their own masters. So, there's a lot of people that's here working, we didn't give any money to. And then all of a sudden, you come up with this program and you only touch a few. You don't touch the masses, you don't touch six hundred teachers, you touch just a few. And I'm gonna make one simple statement, how fair is that? How fair is that when all of our staff needs raises? From, from the janitors to the administrators, they all need raises. So, how do you pull a pot of money aside to benefit a handful when you've got hundreds and call it fair?
I think we did that in the budget time.
Well, what I'm saying is I'm not against the program. I'm against spending the money on a few when you've got hundreds. And when we do things, in my opinion, in my humble opinion, we need to improve the pay of as many people as we possibly can. Maybe I'm wrong, that's just my opinion.
Go ahead. Goal six, it was talking about teacher pay increases. And, you know, I, I just thought that was, I know these goal settings are hard. I mean, I know for me, when I've sat there and been a part of two of them, I mean, there's been, I've been surrounded by people that are smarter than I am in both of my groups, which is not surprising to some, maybe. I'll go ahead and stop you, but, you know, one of them was talking about teacher pay increases. And I know that's something we don't take for, because we, you know, when we're the seventeenth pay in our district, yet we're number two in test scores, I mean, we're doing much more with less. And I mean, that's a true statement to the people that sit in the classrooms and the trenches and working each and every day, the people that come to, you know, gonna come to work tomorrow to work here. I mean, it's a tribute to those. It's not a tribute to myself or any other board member. I mean, it's because we got hardworking people that are working hard for less. But I thought that was a good one on goal six. Goal seven, goal eight, excuse me, need state representatives to show who we, what we're doing, but underpaid, the results of strategies, seven and eight, where did, you know, actually it was something else I wrote down, I'm sorry. But I think we, you know, we talked in our summer law that we were gonna talk to our state representatives. And, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's a good time, maybe not to have a, I think we need to be doing that individually or somehow to where we talk to our state representatives and showing, I don't think we need to parade them in here with the press and, and whole hand will beat them just because we, we don't think they see what we're, we think they should be seeing what we're doing. But I think we should be meeting with them and showing them that we are succeeding, no matter how many ropes we're tying behind our people's backs, and let them drag around. But I think we should be meeting with them and showing them that we are succeeding, no matter how many ropes we're tying behind our people's backs and let them drag around.
And this being an election year, they may be more active with this.
True. And also on goal eight, strategy seven and eight, I just wondered where those figures came from. And you can get back to me on that, but I just wondered, um...
Call.
How?
Call the figures. What, what did you...
Um, the one was maximize the fund generating capability of existing athletic complexes and facilities. Implementation's ongoing. Cost of additional funds of a hundred thousand dollars put in need.
That was bringing that five years ago.
Okay. And number eight was implement measures to reduce utility costs and to upgrade, upgrade the, uh, physical plant and adopt, adaption, adoption, excuse me, I'll spit all this out, I mean, of human behavior strategies designed to reduce utility usage. Implementation spring twenty twenty and the cost is eleven point two million. This was, they were, I just wondered where we got those figures from.
That is the final energy systems we're requesting. That's the amount that the guy in Nashville says we can find answer and I have to come up with it from there.
Eleven two?
Eleven two. That's bottom line. And that human behavior thing, that's fancy words, it kinda lights out.
Okay. Mom told me not to chew gum and talk at the same time, but here I got a coffee drop, so I can't help it. Um, and also, goal number nine, which we talked about that and, and the goal, the goal I was in was talking about to increase reading proficiency in grades K through three. And we kicked around a little bit about, uh, assistance in the lower grades. And I didn't see it made the list or anything on that, but I just wanted to say, it seemed like a pretty good deal, which I know we need help at every level, so that was just my two cents. Anyway, that's questions I have on our five-year strategic plan.
I have to say that Z, what?
I wanted to bring up, um, to increase reading profici- proficiency. He kind of, in K through three, he kind of, um, you mentioned it about, you're talking about increasing instructional assistance, help. Uh, I think if we have in our policy where, um, K one and two has to have a lower number of students, did we not have something in our policy? Work keys about that or do we...
A lower number of students?
Right. Do we have, are all students meeting under twen- uh, maybe possibly under twenty in K through two?
No, I would tell you, we've got some twenty ones.
And that's in kindergarten, isn't it?
Uh, maybe. I'd love to add this one.
That would be the primary that we would need someone like that, because twenty-one in a kindergarten class, um, having to do the, um, what do you say they have to do? Portfolios. It's gonna be difficult to try to retain, but I, I had had a few mentions, complaints from parents about the numbers of, in a kindergarten class. But like we said, it's still under the state.
Right, under.
Right, so I just wanted to bring that up there, but anyway. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, directives on the five-year plan? Again, the, uh, the plan is going back to November before the final adoption of this funding. Um, I think it's fair to say that one of the big reasons the pioneers, second ranked five A football team, the stadium sitting by right. And, uh, this gentleman is also a senior at David Crockett High School. Took the A C T today, right? You can on that, we'll talk about that in a minute. But it's time for we are Washington County. Lights. She'll take care of it.
It's all about you right here.
Do you have it? Can we give it to you?
How do I give it to you?
Do you wanna email it to me?
What is your email?
B I R K N E R.
Could you send it out? Start it.
B.
B.
B as in boy. I R.
R.
K N.
K.
E R. And the letter C as in captain. At W C P E dot com.
Then I'll do it, yeah. That's it?
Got it. Projector went to sleep. Projector wake up. She's getting sleep in twenty minutes.
Do I control on my computer?
Um...
Go ahead, you.
Alright, so we're Washington County, twenty nineteen, and...
Alright, so, yep. See if it works from up here. Got it.
Alright. Yeah, I think it was last week was college application week. Uh, we had students applying everywhere. There's just a few, but there are many more. Everybody was talking about where they applied to and if they're getting accepted. People are still talking about emails they've gotten and stuff they still have to turn in. And so, you know, shows in the road. D C H S homecoming, was that a day? We blew Cock County out. And the kings are, the king queen are in the middle. That's Adam Daniels on the right and Abigail Stafford on the left. Okay. And that picture right there is like my Joshua Muffin. He's a task big photographer. He's only a junior too, like, yeah. Um, yeah. Medical induction ceremony, they had twenty new members. I couldn't find the picture. I'm, I'm sure Mr. Harris took a picture somewhere, but it was big. Alright, I saw this on the website and it seemed really good. And so basically, Danaboo, Danaboo and High School Marine Corps Junior R T C has been selected as a recipient of the Marine Corps Reserve Association Award for the region, comprising eleven states in the Southeastern United States, which is huge. And so they're the twenty-first, it's their twenty-first and second year of stimulus award and they're the top ten percent of all units nationwide. And there are tons of students that have Crockett that are in R T C and they're in R T C, so I don't really know how that works, but I know that they're extremely involved in what they do. And so I'm sure that is, looks very well on the school. Um, national, national long-term scholarship nominees. So nice one, we got Sandra Dollinger and Landon Hammaker. Um, Landon wants to be engineer, Sandra Dollinger wants to be actuary. An actuary is a person who calculates risk for businesses. Um, they make a lot of money. Um, the long scholarship was Harley Patrata, they learned herself. Um, Harley Patrata, I think she's now gonna be physician or something in biology. And she wants to major in biology, something like that. We're up, we're in, um, doing long-term biology together. Um, Bailey Nguyen, she made thirty plus on her A C T. She's really good. She's doing, um, visual arts right now, visual arts. So I think that's what she wants to major in too.
Can you say that?
I want to major in clinical engineering. Um, Halloween bash. So, yeah. Upcoming, on October thirty-first, we have, uh, blood drive at D C H S, I appreciate that, H S. Um, you guys can come by and get the forms to sign up if you want. And I think that, yeah, tonight, I didn't really do it all, but tonight, um, was senior night for volleyball. Um, there are a lot of senior nights coming up. Senior night football will be coming up soon, next month, maybe next, hopefully, we keep the season going on, so even when senior night does come, I don't really have to shed any tears. Um, and today we took the A C T, juniors took the ASBAP, sophomores took a practice A C T and freshmen, I don't really know what the freshmen did honestly. They might have took an A C T too.
A C T.
A C T.
Okay.
Yeah, the juniors were all complaining about the ASBAP test today. They said it was really easy. So, and Mr. Harris says that it may become, um, like, when you get into college, you may have to take that ASBAP test for sophomores.
It's all good. Perhaps a hundred and four secondary opportunity, so it helps us. Uh, pretty much every senior show up today?
No.
Why don't you just give them a take?
Well, some of them, some of them are, like Bailey, she already had thirty plus on her A C Ts or some of them have decided to come or...
Comes upon, but you shouldn't.
Yeah.
How many times have you taken them?
This is my fourth time taking them.
Well, I got a question then. Why were the seniors taking today? I mean, that's my one that, I know the juniors all take it. We pay for it. Or we don't mistake...
And the general assembly has found money for senior retakes now, three or four years in a row, and they're, they're calling it one last shot to max out your...
Okay.
But if you can go from twenty-seven to say a thirty-one, the big scholarship lasts a while. Or you can go from an eighteen to a twenty-two.
So it's free for all seniors to take it?
It's for, they get two shots if you're on free juice lunch, you get additional shots. Uh, so it's, it's not, it's fifty dollars a pop, so these free shots are good. One last question. Are you in the play game this year?
Yes.
This guy played a, a British constable last year.
Yes. This year, um, everybody's leaning more towards the drama because the last few years we've been doing comedies and like, there with a lot of seniors, I'm like, we wanna do something big, we wanna do a drama, but we're still thinking, so we'll see how it goes.
Thank you, I'll give you a quick... Under the other section, um, the annual agenda provides a budget notebook we provide to the board at the October meeting. This is a comprehensive guide to the school's finances for the contest this year. Gentlemen, ladies, this is a public document. Somebody asked for a copy, we have to provide it. And I'll now ask Brad Hale to distribute your copy to you and, uh, he's available, we're available for Q and A.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll go over, uh, especially for the new board members, what the, uh, each section is.
Would you say your year's work is summed up in this book?
There's a lot more that's not in this book. I'll just for, uh, I can give you, if you want me to, I can go over the brief sections for those of you that are new, or I cannot, whichever of y'all choose.
I vote thank you and we'll, we'll... Everybody take a home look at it.
Okay.
Any questions? Call Brad. How's that?
Well done, well done.
I mean, appreciate you. Mr. Flannery, do you have anything else you need?
Yeah, we've got a, uh, if you want to, we, we've got a Gov Deals, a surplus report. Go ahead and get that knocked out. If you look in your Dropbox, there is a, uh, official surplus equipment. And I recommend that the board declare that surplus and that will event the state.
When was it put in there? I didn't see it. Is it in October?
I looked at it earlier today, it's, it's in...
Oh, I'm getting some pictures.
Is it, did the Beam Creek deal get put in there, Dr. Flannery? The, the playground equipment, did that work out?
No, y'all put that on tape.
I thought we postponed it to this month. Just to find out.
Then what are you gonna do with it?
I, I just wanted to make contact with him, with him, and he'll bring it around now.
I have a little trouble. We know who they are.
Okay.
Actually getting them on the phone is proving problematic. We won't sell anything. We're trying to win their wishes. If nothing else, we can take the lack lease and give it to them, direct it to the new school. We don't, we haven't been able to get in touch with them yet.
So can we just postpone that till next, will it carry over to next month to you to bring back to us or...
If you'd like, then you can go ahead and declare the surplus with us and just trust that we won't do anything until we find out what's happening.
Make a motion, we make, uh, all this equipment surplus and put it on GovDeals dot com at the earliest convenience.
I have a motion.
Jared?
I would like to just clarify one item on there is the ham radio equipment. Should be the last picture on, on your slideshow. That is, uh, something that Dr. Flannery brought to our attention that we would like to, I guess I should stand up. That we are going to, um, donate to, uh, Washington County EMS department. It's, uh, ham radio equipment. So all the other stuff will be placed on GovDeals and sold except for the ham radio equipment.
It was permissible under your policy to transfer such equipment to another government agency account.
So, so does that motion need to be amended? Did you consider nine one one or do they already have ham radio?
It's going to that building.
It's going to that building.
And they're going, they, the, the staff...
Well, EMS is not in that building when you say that EMS.
No, it's emergency management system. On the bottom floor, under nine one one.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
And they have...
Yeah, E I, that's different. Okay.
They use the same ham radio.
Correct.
They're gonna come in for them.
I didn't know if we're going to the ambulance guys or...
No, I got you, definitely nine one one.
Mr. Chairman, can I amend my motion if you'll allow me to?
Yes, you can amend your motion.
I'd like...
Make your motion. I'd like to hear your motion made.
I'd like to declare all this equipment, surplus equipment, and put it on GovDeals dot com. And the ham radio on the last page will go to E M A or emergency management system or agency, whichever one it is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dollinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangrel?
Uh...
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Ms. Irving?
Uh...
Finally, I just a reminder that South Central's eightieth birthday party is this Thursday evening. festivities begin five...
Mr. Day?
Before we forget, was he gonna give us a report? After a five-minute recess. Oh, after coming, or is that bad? Keep your, bat your breath, yeah. Yeah. His report will be under new business. New business, okay. Okay. Five minutes. Three glasses of wine, I am... I'm sorry, but I got to go.
Commented, on average, it's about every six or seven years.
Well.
And I think we average seven or eight turbos a year, probably, which forty-five hundred is five thousand.
Right.
So that's about thirty-five thousand in expense. But that was just a point I made when I was looking at that list. I don't have it in front of me right now. I wasn't saying one was better than the other, and I was just making a point that I didn't see how there was twenty-three hundred dollars of expense per bus, per year, on just turbo maintenance. Although I don't see that coming through first order.
I don't. My, my opinion, I don't see. I don't see the propane getting better mileage than the diesel does. The diesel's. Well, it's a, it's a V-ten. I think it's what's in the motor, the motor wheels. But. That's the, the cost per day.
For diesel, and that's the cost per day part.
Really, even if you, even if our numbers was half wrong, it's still a tremendous savings from diesel.
So you're telling me that seven, seventy-six, seventy-five, and ten cents per year, per bus, to maintain a diesel bus? And we're gonna save seventy-six, fifty-four, ten, or fifty-three dollars a year per bus?
That's not possible. That would only be on a bus where you had to replace the turbo.
Okay, so these are possible.
Possible expenses.
Exactly, potential costs. That's not really.
Like Mr. McLean said, that turbo might just be once over fifty years or something.
So basically, we would have one oil change on a, and that's it? On a propane bus?
You'll change oil every ten, ten thousand miles, eight thousand miles, whatever the maintenance is on a bus, whatever they do. It's probably gonna be cheaper on a propane bus, because it don't hold as much oil. Oil pan on a diesel's gonna hold fourteen quarts, and that propane's probably gonna hold ten, or eight. So.
I'm just not understanding how it saves this much money. I mean, how many buses have we said we had, a hundred?
A hundred, four or so. The whole year, at least, probably about a hundred.
I mean, just say it saved two hundred thou, or two thousand dollars, propane versus diesel. At a hundred buses, it's two hundred thousand dollars.
I don't, we, we're not gonna replace all the buses at once. If, if the board felt like they wanted to try propane, few propane buses, then we could try them. I, I mean, I don't know how I'm gonna vote.
I'd like to know how much the cost, because my understanding is, is they're a little more expensive on the front end than on the back end.
Wait, and who felt, you have some?
I think they're, uh, they're being bid in both ways now. They say propane bus and a diesel. So when the bids come in, the board, the big review will get the review of actual cost.
So we've already bid, but those are already out for bid, so they're, we're waiting on those to come in?
Yes, ma'am.
The thing about, we don't have no place to fill up the propane bus. It will be at.
It'll be bus garage. And, and the fuel vendor will put the filling station in at the bus garage, no charge, it's all new contract.
I think it's something, I mean, you can collect all kinds of data, but you almost have to.
Create your own data.
Just put 'em out there and see what happens.
Deep up there, somebody.
They start having road troubles, you know? You say turbos on a diesel bus, well, it may be the propane injector on the propane bus. So I don't have a problem if y'all wanna try three or four of them, if they're costing, you know?
And I'm price wise. Who, who did you say may mow, like, you said most of them?
Bluebirds and hoppers, both. They do say propane bus.
So is it possible to get some kind of comparison from them on their recalls and what they have in those problems?
I would imagine it would.
Sure.
I would imagine.
I think that's kinda probably what we need to look at, too, is just get some more information on.
Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, that we are going to Nashville next month, and the bus people will be down there. So go to them and ask.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that the director have his bus garage manager do the research, and come back through the director and make a recommendation to the sports.
All right, I have a motion, and do I need, I have a second?
I don't think you did your name.
We don't need any motion.
I thought that's what you said.
No, I said a recommendation.
Oh, a recommendation, I'm sorry.
I'd still like a safety analysis, you know, like, now I'm gonna.
Yeah. What we do, we'll drive up Kingsport and just talk to the people. Kingsport's the biggest place propane is, so we're just gonna talk to them, look at them.
Those are city buses, are they right?
They are. It, it, a big year for one of our buses is ten thousand miles. We don't run long routes. It's kind of apples and apples. Now, Green County has the long routes. They not work, they not work roughs.
Anything else, Six?
Yeah, we might as well carry on. Uh, Mr. Patrick provided estimates on some outside sources providing the mowing of the school grounds. Uh, we discussed that. Mr. Patrick said something about the flexibility of having in-house maintenance doing the mowing. Uh, gave an example, if urgent need and mowing arose at the school due to an event, availability to the outside service to complete the job. Let me, let me relook at that. Basically, what he was saying was, something needs to be done immediately. The outside service possibly can't run over there and do it as well as, as what we can do in-house. Uh, and I guess to go a step further, we discussed some numbers on outside sources mowing versus the cost of inside sources mowing, and then the benefits and the disadvantages to each. So I guess that's, uh, that's where it is. Um, Mr. McKinnon moved to receive non-binding quotes from outside entities on mowing school grounds. Uh, Ms. McKinnon seconded the motion, which carried with a voice vote. Mr. Green and Mr. Hale, uh, for no, says no votes, is that correct? So, the committee recommended approval. So, but we was asking to, to do proposals, right, Mr. Patrick?
That's correct.
So, we still wanna move forward with proposals. He said we could do proposals and not have to actually award anybody a bid to, to give the actual real numbers instead of a estimate. We wanna know actually what people would charge to do it, and see if we can look at saving some money and, and. I even mentioned if, if at all possible, if we come back and we save money, not necessarily that we would cut out, but we might be able to add someone to help Mr. Patrick in his, uh, work area. Um. Mr. Green suggested consideration of acquiring coaches to obtain CDLs and effort to cut costs for bus drivers to athletic events. That didn't go very far. Uh, Mr. McKinnon also suggested purchasing minivans to accommodate travel for groups. We also discussed tra, uh, transforming retired minibus into activity buses. And also, at the end, uh, Mr. Day presented information to the committee, and I requested from Dr. Flannery on rental vehicles services provided by enterprises. This would provide an alternate, uh, system personnel to drive vehicles, rental vehicles for travel rather than personal vehicles, to eliminate the cost of paying mileage. Asked Dr. Flannery to forward the information to the committee for everyone to review.
Don't go out first, and then.
Let me ask a question, I don't know who can answer, and that. If we took a minibus and we painted it white, does that, does that person that was to drive it have to have CDLs?
With all the kids.
You have to have CDL, uh, well, you're in a van.
It's not.
But it's, it's an activity. Like, it's not a school bus.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let you.
They got air brakes.
No, they don't. Your minibus, they don't have air brakes.
Yeah, if it's over fifteen thousand pounds, and that's what school bus weighs, it's gonna be thousands.
But that's a school bus. A minibus ain't gonna weigh that. Minibus ain't gonna weigh but about seventy-five hundred.
Our in-house expert is Susan Kieran, and she's obviously out of pocket. Let me get that together, and I'll get that out. I just hate saying.
Cause I, we see a lot, when we go to ballgames, how many, many little buses do you see at signet? They're painted, they're painted white, and they got the maroon stripe on them. It's them people that's are driving them, that they have a CDL.
I swear, I think they do that to keep them out of the, 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 the inspections. They do regular bus maintenance without the added expensive inspections. But I'm gonna find out.
Can we not count somebody's sign sales, John City, if I ask?
Call somebody.
The buses are provided by, by the city, so those could very well just be school buses.
Maybe like for hire endorsement or something, or.
Well, they are school buses.
But I mean that they're under the control of the schools.
They're, they're.
Not under the control of the transportation.
So they would be controlled for, but maybe, they could be. I understand what you're saying.
I make sure.
But did that person have to have CDL?
That was a part of the question.
I mean, you don't have a, a van, we have eight passenger vans, right?
You can drive up to a ten-passenger van with a regular operator's license. You go over there, it's, you can't, you just can't really get up on a school bus. And then you have to have that bus license. But when they pay them, that's what it's for.
Okay. You done, Jason?
Yeah, with that.
All right.
I got a question to ask, if you don't mind, to go back to that mowing. Is this two hundred and seventy acres, yeah, ground, sixty-five dollars acres, seventy dollars acre, ninety-five dollars acres, that a, is that what we're figuring it's costing ourselves? Or is that what the outside help was costing?
That's the, uh, that's the outsourcing estimate. That's the outsourcing estimate.
Our labor was what, a hundred eighty-three thousand?
Hundred eighty-three thousand for four employees, does not include equipment.
And, and, and that's what we was going back to on, that's why we suggested Mr. T can put that together as far as a, a good paid estimate, yeah. So that's why we wanna take it a step further, actually get real proposals and just see. I mean, I, I think that's probably pretty accurate numbers, but we don't know, and then plus, we gotta add in the expenses, that's his four employees, a hundred eighty-three thousand. I think we come up with a number of about twenty-five thousand of equipment on top of that, which puts us within about two thousand of that number.
And that's what we're doing now?
That's what we're doing now, but what we didn't include in that, on top of that, was probably vehicle expense, gas, upkeep, et cetera, on our trucks and trailers and.
Depreciation on all of it.
Yeah.
So it'd be cheaper to go outside versus inside according to that number?
Well.
I mean.
We don't know if it's enough, I mean, we don't know if it's enough.
We need to clean this number up a little bit, maybe.
We need to clean them all up a little bit.
Let me ask you another question while we're talking about mowing. Boots Creek Elementary, have we taken ownership of that school?
Yeah.
I know some of that's county land.
Correct.
Who's gonna maintain that county land?
Might ask the mayor of Washington County.
Patrick Flannery, you care to ask him? I mean, it's thirty million dollar building, and it looks pretty rough on that one.
I have asked that question repeatedly, and yet to get us some. I think they're still holding, we started holding.
Are you talking about between the school and Boots Creek Road, or you talking about on the backside, back on the athletic? When you're going through Highland Church or?
On the walls and stuff.
On the rock? That's, I mean. That wall's ours. Yeah, you don't wear the athletic field's coming on, it's kinda wrapped around. Well, you know how it steps up? I mean, it looks.
It'll be the walls, the athletic fields, then the school.
I think we need to look at the deeds. That's the county's property, I think.
Probably is. I mean, everybody's looking at it like it's our school. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, I think a heck of a big.
We have seventeen acres.
Right, where the building sits.
Where the building sits.
But Tony Burris has said the school board owns twenty-one point six eight acres of Boots Creek Elementary. And the rest of it belongs to Washington County.
Has it been divested over?
No.
Did that when they pulled it, bought it.
Mr. Flannery's right. County's perception is that belongs to the school system, we need to be taking care of it, so we need to get this resolved pretty quickly.
Can we ask the sheriff's department to at least send somebody up there to weed the horrendous wall?
They think it's more than they can handle.
There wouldn't be a motion there anyway.
Between the walls, is that what?
It'd be great.
No, we're, we're talking about, no, we're not.
What, Phil?
When I asked early on for the sheriff's department to come up with a group of people that do the weed eating, and they felt it was more than they could handle. We're talking about the large bank from, say, the water, uh, the stormwater retention ponds up to the walls. And, and you know, the, the walls, top of the wall, they're nothing to handle, in fact. You know, if that truly belongs to the school system, we'll plant something on there that doesn't grow, okay? An ivy, a creeper of some kind.
Will you look into that and get a surprise though, what?
After we find out, after we determine who belongs to. Uh, I've got a lot of work to do, and working for somebody else is not what I choose to do right now.
You could buy a cornerstone, thirty-one dollars a, to an eight gallon jug.
But, uh, you know, we'll, when we determine who's it is to take care of, then I'll be all over it.
And what are we working towards to go find out who, who's gonna take care of it?
Philip is gonna check into.
It's simply.
I guess Philip is gonna check in.
This property does not belong to the Board of Education. There is no way our maintenance department should care for somebody else's property.
Well, we legally can't unless we charge for it.
Well, if our twenty-one acres goes to the creek, it is ours.
This is true, Mr. Turbin, but the twenty-one acres does not go to the creek, I promise you that.
Okay, well, I don't know, I mean, you know, I.
I'll settle this right now. Mr. Patrick, you work for me, and you are not the mowed property that does not belong to the Washington County Board of Education.
Yes, sir.
Do we ever thought of the county?
Well, let me ask a question. You say that, that the board directs them to do, directs you to have them do that.
We have a problem, because in my contract, you tell, that doesn't work, you're not supposed to handle my first one.
Well, no, the problem, it, because there's obviously a problem in this, it looks crazy, right?
I'm gonna come right back to you and say that I'm gonna need some more money, I'm gonna need some more manpower, because that's a big chunk of property.
So Chad's question is, what are we doing with, who's in contact with the county to get them to do?
Their job.
Like I said moments ago, I've asked, I've asked, and I've asked budget, and I cannot get an answer, I mean.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You've asked the budget to mow?
No, 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 I've asked them who's in charge of this. I don't think I'd ask those humans to do that.
May I, may I compound this confusion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, after our meeting at the McKinnon Center, I stood at the parking lot for probably an hour and a half talking to Chuck Best and Jim Whittman. And I said, who's gonna mow this, the sports field that you guys are gonna own, but we get to use? And Mr. Best said, we'll mow the, and the school property as long as we can. We'll mow it, his exact words, we'll mow it as long as we can. And I wanted to look at him and say, is that seven days, seven weeks, seven months, or seven years?
So you're gonna have another issue.
People have another issue down the road.
My, my feelings is, we're gonna mow around that school. Right? But it's great. All right, we're gonna mow around the school. I need to know where my property line is.
Keith, what I got pulled up right here, you can see that right-of-way strip right up through there. That says Washington County, which is obviously where our school is. All the way down to the creek. And there's another five acre track to the right of that, that's also divested separately, Washington County. Everything on the left side of that driveway, all the way back around that school, all the way through there, is theirs.
Is theirs.
So all the walls Chad's talking about, according to this, is not ours.
Okay.
But everything to the right of that road, unless that five acres is excluded, is ours.
Along the creek. Now, that green part right there that's.
That's where your school is.
That is the school?
Yeah.
All right, is that road, that's Boots Creek Road right there, right?
Yeah, that's Boots Creek Road. And that property that's left, the highlighted now is Alec Williams. And then that says Washington County, that says Washington County, which is our school sitting on it.
Not on the other side.
He owns it.
He owns this side.
He owns center, and we probably own the center of it, or. Those waters aren't good.
So he too, he's not there to mow the end, that's just.
Well, he ain't gonna mow our side.
I mean, his side.
Yeah, he don't mow his side, he ain't gonna do about it.
He's got bulls in there, he ain't gonna mow it.
But what Mr. Flannery's talking about, see, that's where your ball fields is gonna go.
Where, where's the walls?
Right here.
We got the five acres right there of a wall facing Boots Creek.
See, the walls are right here on this property, left of the driveway, here's, here's our property. Here.
Okay.
So right there is their property, which is all left of the driveway, up around and around behind the school, up on the. Basically, everything but the school, and there's the roadway going up there. The only question is, is that little parcel right there ours or theirs? If we've got twenty-one acres, then that's ours, because this parcel that the school's sitting on is eighteen point eighty-four. And then that five, what's that, that twenty-three, twenty-three acres? Somebody's numbers are skewed.
Mr. Chairman, I have a recommendation I'd like to make. I think this board should allow our director and our maintenance supervisor to determine what property is whose, and mow what is appropriate for us to mow, and let's move on.
Okay. I don't have, I, that's what, I, I think that's a good idea, but Chad and I have been bombarded with parents and Boots Creek, teachers and staff. And we're not trying to cause problems, we're just trying to rectify problems.
Tell them to call the county.
Well, we're trying to decide what the property line is, that's what we're asking. That's, that we're getting answers, and we're getting different answers.
That will be our director and our maintenance supervisor to determine what's what, and move forward accordingly.
I mean, I don't mean disrespect to Dr. Flannery or Philip Patrick, we're just trying to rectify problems, that's, that's all we're asking.
Well, I always thought that prisoners would go out there and mow that. If they're not gonna mow it, I make a motion that we, or I ain't gonna make a motion right now, but I will, I would, that we go in there with the spray and ju, round up, and I'll kill everything right in front of that wall, and they won't be nothing.
You're gonna have people, people upset, Hughes.
They won't say a word because they can't see it.
I wouldn't do that.
They won't see it.
So, so can we come back at the next meeting with an answer? Would that be appropriate?
Or Friday at eight?
Or Friday at eight, if we got time. If it's possible. It can't be hour or somebody after.
But it's growing now, it's all dead.
Well, yeah, it's all dead, that's exactly right.
I mean, look.
We could put it in, in him.
Only problem is, is three, three tall and dead.
Three tall.
It's still there.
It's gonna look like for the week.
I will make, let's wait till next month, if that's all right with everybody, what Philip recommends. Okay? Moving on. Facilities. Oh, this is good.
Guess who?
Go ahead, Jason.
Guess who?
I thought you were wrong.
Well, no, sir, we're just now moving into facilities.
We're on golf game.
Let me just go ahead and go through it, I feel like that's the lead.
Uh, the facilities committee met on Monday, September thirtieth, four o'clock. In the boardroom central office, the president with Chairman Jason Day, Todd Ganger, Nat Buchanan, Dr. Bill Flannery, maintenance supervisor Philip Patrick, committee member David Hammond was not, was absent. Uh, Mr. Day complimenting the order, Mr. Patrick, Mr. Patrick presented a monthly maintenance report. Mr. Ganger said the new sidewalk at Davie Cocker High School, softball fields. Mr. Ganger asked an update on the replacement of lots of softball field. Mr. Patrick reported he was in communication with Musco Lighting regarding the replacement. He said the board is a member of Sourcewell, formerly NJPA. He continued, he continued to represent that Musco Lighting will be receiving a quote for the job through Sourcewell. He said if the cost received is at or below a hundred and fifty thousand allotted previously by the board, he will submit a purchase order and proceed with the replacement of the lots. Mr. Patrick updated, Estella Roofing is currently working on Lamar to address the bad issue here. Mr. Day presented a letter addressed to the board to offer the opportunity to purchase Jackson Park Church of the Brethren property. Dr. Flannery made a motion to forward the request to the full board with no recommendation from this committee. Ms. Buchanan seconded the motion. Mr. Day asked for a voice vote. Mr. Ganger called for the vision of the house. Ms. McKinnon seconded the motion, which carried on to a roll call vote. The no votes were Mr. Ganger and Mr. Patrick. Dr. Flannery presented a report that consisted of each, each school's system facility to include square footage, age and acreage. He said the county commissioner, Susan, county commissioner Susie Williams had contacted him and requested he provided the information to the commission, asked that he provide information to the commission. Mr. McLean asked if a clause could be included in the deed transfers of Boots Creek Elementary in Jonesboro, the properties gave away, that if properties are stopped being used for the intentional purposes, that the properties would be, would revert back to the school system. Dr. Flannery said, yes, that would be a common clause in such agreements, the meeting was adjourned. State Department of Justice Committee, Jason Day, State Department of Justice Committee Chairman.
I have a motion to accept, record?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, what is the, is this your best update?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait. Uh, all those in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Uh, Estella's down there, has started Wednesday. Actually manned the job, I think, on Friday, started Monday or yesterday, I forget what day it is now. Putting some trim around the soffit areas where we suspect, I emphasize where we suspect that intrusion may be. They are also looking at any other different areas that we suggested where they suspect something may be coming in. And they'll be repairing those as they come to.
Who will make the decision on whether or not the gym will be, when it will be used?
Who makes the decision? Dr. Flannery.
And I will do so under the advisement of Dr. Kersky, the Director of Washington County Health.
I have a question on that. Just hit me. So, I'm trying to envision how it's getting in the soffit and still getting into the building. So there has to be openings inside the building as well. I'm, I can't envision how that thing's built.
I, I can't either.
So is anybody, have we looked at the inside ceiling as well? Is there something we can do there? I mean, there's gotta be an opening there, too, I guess, is what.
I feel like that if we, if we can close the outside off, we've taken care of the inside.
Yeah.
You know, we.
Yeah.
Because, first of all, some of my men wanted to look at, focusing up the inside, that's, that keep. If we don't stop the penetration from the outside, then we're not stopping it.
Yeah.
So this is the direction we're going to, uh, if we can seal up the outside, we've stopped it.
Well, sure, okay. I was just thinking, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree, I was just thinking, if that don't work, then we'll be on the inside, seal it up later.
I just don't want to tell you, Mr. Day, you know, it's been a struggle, my friend.
Yep. Okay.
Do you have any recommendations?
I mean, I agree with what he said, make sure the outside.
I'm talking about on your report.
No, we do not, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was gonna park, say, like, huh, thanks for asking.
Yes, you do.
Yes, you do, Jake, yes, you do.
Word. Word. Which one?
The property, property.
Oh.
Well, I'm gonna say it's a recommendation, right?
Yes, you.
Forward to the, to the full board of.
There's no recommendation from the committee, so I guess what, okay. So do we have a recommendation? We don't have a recommendation. We, our recommendation was to bring it to the full board.
That's the recommendation.
We did, that was Mr. Ganger.
I'd like to make a motion that we let Jackson Park Church of the Brethren know that we are not interested in purchasing their. I'd like to make a motion that we let Jackson Park Church of the Brethren know that we are not interested in purchasing their property.
Second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call vote, or discussion, please, I'm sorry. Discussion.
Well, I appreciate the fact that they offered it to us, but, uh, with everything we've been going on, I simply don't see any need of that property that we have at this time. I don't have a clue what we do with it.
Do we have, who do we have to notify, do we have to write them a letter, do we have to call them?
I think the letter came from Sue Christian.
Yeah, she's chair...
Jeremy Doc's just, uh, informed me two months ago that when they got an appraisal, they were gonna send it, uh, to us to see if we wanted to purchase it, and I told him that's fine, just send it to the facilities, and he just, now this past meeting, got it sent.
So, do you send a...
It'll be just simply a, Dr. Flanery calling, saying we're not there.
Just a call, and thank you for that. All.
Okay. Roll ca, or, uh, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this. Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah.
Ms. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Ah.
Next. I assume that's the only one in there, generally.
Okay. I got a couple of questions to ask about that, if you don't mind. Uh, the, and I, and I'm just asking to be, to see what's going on, but the sidewalk to Davie High School softball field looks good. What did we find out with the one going to be?
It's just a little more involved, uh, we're, we're trying to come up playing along with the, the, at least, satisfactors of athletic drag route there, and quite a bit more concrete. And we were lucky enough to have a pad to run this particular piece of concrete to, at Davie Crockett. We had to put a pad, I guess, out in Daniel Boone, so it's just, it was more involved. It's gonna take a little time, but we've got till spring.
What about the, how long do you think it's gonna be before the roofing company's done, done our, their morgue?
I have no clue. After that's completed, then we've got about a forty thousand dollar worth of work to do with, uh, Servpro, who is a, uh, organization that said they can clean that disinfect, steel rafters all the way to the floor. And I think health department, I don't know, Center for Police Patrol, or whoever, I think I'll be able to take a look at it, take air samples and so forth, do that, and we'll get all that cleared away, then Dr. Flanery turns the place up.
Do we anticipate it being open after fall break?
Next fall break, it's next week, I don't even know when that is.
Site director.
Next week, I doubt it.
Doctor Strawwell's down there, said he thought it might take five days, I don't know how he felt.
I don't think it'll be open after fall break, I'm sure.
That's pretty big cleaning job.
Yeah.
Are they scheduled? Servpro, are they scheduled, I mean, they know...
They have a scope of work, Phil's not gonna let them in, don't believe it's done.
But I mean, do they know?
They know they're, yes, sir, they know they're working, and, but then they get a call anytime, but I, you know, I...
I was wondering, I mean, I was thinking, you know, they need it on their schedule, so we don't finish Monday, and it's three weeks before they can show up, so I don't know who's over that, or how that was going, who was scheduling that, or?
That's me.
You, that's you?
Yep, me.
So you'll schedule that?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to do the, the lights down there at Crockett, I know we approved that, but didn't we approve that on last year's budget in, in like February, November of last year?
It carried, it was carried forward, so the budget you all approved still...
It still has that in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a discussion, it wasn't on paper with, just in one of our meetings, we, because there was about forty thousand or fifty in funds that the dietary department had not spent of that eighty thousand, so...
So they still have theirs too as well, spent?
Yeah, no, they, they spent though, several, I'm saying, I think twenty grand of that already this year, but I'd have to go check first.
I think I did see it in the August, in August.
If that price quote happens to go above that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'll be forced to bring it back to you all, because I can't spend what you have approved.
And what about the Westview, uh, gym, somebody said today, or I had a phone call today, saying that it was closed, that they were still working on the floor.
It is not closed, a gym is not closed. If they choose not to use it, it's their choice. Uh, Thursday, my man will go in there and start sanding that area of the floor that was repaired. After he sands that, he'll put, uh, I think we've got, put one out of bound line down through there, paint it down. After that dries, we put a couple of sealer, after that dries, we put two more coats of sealer as they dry, the sanding in between each one. So it's, it's a process, it'll be, we should finish that during the fall break.
Anything else?
It's all I have, sir.
Okay. Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Should be a copy at your workstation. If you're just now seen it, I'll give you just a minute to look over it. Then I'll read it to you and ask for your approval of the report. Finance committee met on Tuesday, October one, two thousand nineteen, at four thirty P M. At the Washington County Department of Education Central Office, those present for the meeting, Chairman Philip McLean, committee members Mary Beth Dillinger and Nat Buchanan, Director of Schools, Dr. Flanery, Dr. Ellis Holcomb, and Director of Finance, Brad Hale. I started to say Dr. Brad Hale. Also in attendance were Angela Dwyant, Paul Masters, Philip Patrick. Absent for the meeting was Board Member Mitch Smerita. Committee considered the general fund financial statement for the month of August two thousand nineteen, and the committee recommends approval. The committee considered the federal fund financial statement for the month of August two thousand nineteen, and the committee recommends approval. Committee discussed the overtime rule recently issued by the U.S. Department of Labor, effective January one, two thousand twenty, all full-time employees making less than thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars in gross pay annually must be paid at an hourly rate of pay that will include overtime pay at one point five times the employee's base hourly rate of pay. An analysis has been conducted to estimate the financial impact to the school system as it relates to bookkeepers and other office staff that assist with scheduling substitute teachers. The estimated annual impact to this change is in excess of sixty-eight thousand dollars annually. The committee instructed the Director of Schools and Director of Finance to explore third-party companies that offer assistance in scheduling substitute teachers on the school level. Director of Schools will bring his recommendation to the next finance committee meeting in November two thousand nineteen. That completes the report, and I move for approval of the report, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote on the report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee considered the general fund financial statement for the month of August two thousand nineteen, and we move for approval.
Another second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Richard McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh, motion aye, Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee considered the federal fund financial statement for the month of August two thousand nineteen, and we move for approval.
Another second? Second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh, motion aye, Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that completes any requirement from the finance committee for the board to consider and take action on tonight, and, uh, hope you understood that last paragraph, and, uh, we'll give you some recommendation on it next month.
Okay. Uh, staff reports. My staff is not, your staff is not seeing that, so I guess they're satisfied. New business, Mr. As.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had the pleasure of attending the county commission meeting workshop this afternoon, this evening. Uh, I was asked to come back and kind of report what was said and what was, what was done. They introduced the legal counsel for the county, um, Colvin Schmidt, I believe was his name.
Culver.
Culver, and, uh, they talked about the, the two different leases that, that we're aware of. Biggest issue that they, they seemed to, to sit upon was the apportionment of the monies. And the big, the big thing I gotta admit, of course, feel free to, to chime in, is, um, if the money the county's paying goes toward capital improvements, we do not have to share that money with, with Johnson City. The, the attorney that was there said there is some case law, um, that, that backs that, that point of view up. If it's, uh, maintenance and operating costs that the county commission's giving to school, we are obligated to share that money with Johnson City. Which is why I was texting Mr. Hale earlier today to kind of get an idea, I thought they were gonna ask me what it would cost to operate, uh, new Jonesboro school, they never got around to that. They made a point to say that the county would have to consider multiple risks to, to enter into a lease agreement with the county. I'll list some of those here. Any excess cost, if they say we're gonna spend thirty million dollars, and the county writes, enters into a lease agreement for thirty million dollars, and it goes over that, the county's responsible for that money. If the building has issues with it, after it's turned over to us, the county's responsible for it, not the town. If a challenge from Johnson City is successful, meaning if, if, if we go ahead and, if we, the county goes ahead and enters into this lease agreement, and the county sues, and is found to be, uh, to be right in, in, in that litigation, and it's held against the county, the county is still responsible for the bonds and giving Johnson City that extra money. Or, if they lose in court, and the law is subsequently changed to say that you cannot do that as, as it was done, we could be, the county could be responsible for those costs. So we started to get into a place where we were getting very to ask questions, and then Commissioner Harris brought up that he was uncomfortable discussing this issue with the county's attorney, uh, in that, he referenced this eight times, that the people from Johnson City were in the room and threatened for litigation, and he thought that they should go enter into, uh, executive session, he thought it was a, an attorney-client privilege. Uh, the county's attorney was there, uh, the, the sitting attorney, not the one for the, for the lease agreement, I don't know that lady's name.
Allison Wilkinson.
Allison Wilkinson was there, and she said unless you have current litigation or pending litigation, there's no cause to enter into executive session, if he was not comfortable asking questions, then basically don't ask questions. Um, Ms., Commissioner Jones wrote up the cost of the project, was wondering when is it too late to get out of it? Uh, you know, how, how late in the process can we say, as a county, no, we don't wanna do this? Uh, it was basically up until the point we sign the lease, once we sign the leases, uh, we're, we're obligated. Again, there was, they mentioned the case law concerning the apportionment issue. Apparently, this court ruled on the statute, and they created certain guidelines for school systems to go through, and he felt very confident, comfortable, given his opinion that if the county followed the guidelines that the statute itself lays out, there would not be any, uh, issue in, in terms of litigation. Then they got into all kinds of money about how much it was gonna cost, and, uh, they talked about, biggest thing I got, the total project cost, principal and interest is gonna be about fifty-six million dollars, uh, on the county principal and interest.
I think that was over a thirty-eight year period.
Yeah.
Because we're looking at how they funded it to the twenty-year, or you'd use the word development over thirty-eight, thirty-seven.
They bounced around a twenty-year lease, a twenty-five-year lease, a thirty-year lease, a four-point-one-seven interest rate, a three-point-oh interest rate, what the current interest rate would be. So there was all these numbers flying around that, actually, that the, the, the bottom line was, the leases are not complete yet, they have set a, a date of October ninth to have the leases in the hands of the county commission for them to review and vote on that at, at October seventeenth deadline. I guess there will be a meeting for them to hold of where they will vote on that, so they'll have about eight days to look over the, the, the lease agreement. And I would assume during that point of time, when the lease agreement is actually finalized, they'll have a set timeframe for how long the lease will be in effect, what the interest rate will be, and, and that such.
Well, that, well, we're supposed to get a copy of the lease too, right? What you said there just a minute ago about if something tears up, we're responsible, not, not the town? What was that, I mean?
I mean, if, if, if there's a, if there's a construction, that was the term that Commissioner Schmidt used, if there's a construction defect discovered, uh, you know, after the system takes possession of the store, if it's outside any warding period, the tenant would be obligated to make those repairs. Now, is that the Board of Education, or is that general government, I can't answer that right now.
Is that...
I mean, we, today, it's only general government, that's where you get your funding. When we get our funding.
I mean, so the, the lease, does the Board of Education sign the lease, and county signs the lease? Do we have a lease with?
Board of Education's not signed the court of the lease, but the lease will be, I mean, the, the plan is that, that lease would have to be signed to the Board of Education, because it's gonna become the office.
Our monies will pay for it?
Uh, no, the lease, the lease payments will still flow out of, uh, yeah, it's not, the, the, and that's the whole issue about the apportionment and the sharing.
That's what I was wondering.
Those payments will come out of, uh, and I don't know that any of y'all were at the budget committee meeting, but those payments will come out of capital investment.
Why, why would, why would they not fund us, and we pay it?
Because then you have to double.
And you have to pay Johnson City.
I thought the county did that, not the school system.
Well, county does, but if they don't pay it, then they gotta give them a B, of course.
Technically, they're paying the town, Jonesboro, not the school system.
Yeah.
Uh, one other thing of note that I, I found interesting is Commissioner Tester brought up our deficits for our school board budget in two thousand twenty-one. He said it was about five million, and in two thousand twenty-two was about six-point-eight million, and he wondered about how the school board would be able to reprioritize our, that list of needs that we have every year. Uh, and I guess, uh, Mr. Meredith, that was a projection that you had, he had that document, I'm not sure how, how accurate that is as we try to foresee the future, but he did bring up the point that it looks like the school system will be running a negative number.
The capital investment plan.
Right.
Which includes general government.
Okay, so it was all of them, okay.
That was not strict, so the Board of Education.
Does he understand that?
Does Mr. Tester understand that?
Does he understand that?
I don't know that that was even, uh, whether it was school board, or it, it was just capital investment.
But I did note that Commissioner Mathely did say that the school board would have to reprioritize, I just thought that was something y'all would want to know. So, a lot of talk, and they really, it was, of course, it was no decision-making at all, they sat down on the front end, they were just there to ask questions, and when Commissioner Harris brought up the attorney-client issue, that seemed to, uh, put a damper on anybody's, uh, excitement in asking questions in open form, like, is that?
Did they talk about it from the break?
No, no, they did not.
So do you feel positive about it?
I had a conver, a conversation, I guess, with, uh, Mayor Brock from Johnson City, who, who mentioned that they were working in the background to have an inter-government or inter-local government agreement, uh, to where that, that Johnson City might, uh, could get some funding as well. She made a point to articulate... She made a point to articulate that this was not a city versus county-school system issue. I, if you ask my personal opinion, I think there's some commissioners on the, on that commission who, who still have some reluctance to enter into a lease agreement that they haven't seen and where that money's gonna come from. I think that's, that's, I think, I'm, I feel pretty comfortable, confident saying that. Well, now, will they find a way to work around that? I do believe that, that it was the mood of the room that they'll find a way to get this done.
Can I, I wanna add that Mr., Mr. Schmidt, the, he's looking at, you all all got a copy of the lease, the initial composite lease at the town hall in the neighborhood. And you'll recall that the town's attorney, Mr.,
Were you looking?
Thank you, when Brian did. You know, indicated that that was purely a draft at that court.
And we changed.
Well.
We voted as a board to change some of that draft.
Which, which, which Mr. Bennett has made those recommendations to the town's attorneys to consider in that draft. Some were put in, they've been taken back out. So, I mean, really, there's a lot, a lot of negotiation going on with your attorneys on this lease agreement. And once that lease agreement has been negotiated and the, and the terms of it have been finalized, then I think that's when you get to a point where you can really make a decision on something. You know, whether you take that next step forward.
Boy, hey.
You said it right. Yes, you confused me there a little bit. You're saying some went in and some came out. When does it come back to us for approval of what's finally there?
Well, that's a good question because the county certainly wants to see a final lease document, okay? So, Mr. Bennett has recommended changes to the town's attorneys.
I wanna see what's been taken back out that we recommended.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what you're gonna, what you're gonna find out once, once it's all fully negotiated, I'm sure, Philip, is that those leases will be distributed to the Board of Education as well as the county commission. But, you know, right now, it, it, it's a working process to that.
And they said that multiple times, that this, they're just hammering this out on an hourly basis, just working on it, working on it.
And now, if you want, you know, nine Board of Education members and fifteen commissioners to sit in a room with the attorneys and try to negotiate the lease, then good luck. But your attorneys are working for each of the parties. And so I think you need to let them do the job.
My, my opinion would be that after they have those leases finished on October ninth, that that would be an opportunity for the school board to communicate with the county commission what, what issues they may have with those leases. Because again, Mr. Matherly asked if, if they had to decide this by October seventeenth. And I was under the impression that that was the date they're gonna decide, so.
Or with the town of Jonesboro.
Exactly.
The issue may be, you know, between this Board of Education and the town of Jonesboro.
So there's, they are gonna meet again October ninth?
I don't know if there's a meeting planned, there's just, that's the deadline they've given to hand out, to have the actual lease agreements ready.
There's a requirement that when governmental bodies consider long-term leases, there has to be a seven-day public notice of the terms. And so those terms have yet to been, you know, nailed down, the requirement, so.
Do we meet, need to meet again before then or what?
Do I, I don't think we need to meet until we figure out what that lease is in there. This board, my opinion, this board voted on what we wanted in our agreement. And our attorney, like Philip said, is supposed to support what we want. And this board voted for that.
If, and if he does, and if the lease comes back with all those items in there, then I think it's good to go. If the lease comes back.
On our end.
On, on our, oh, yeah, on, on our end. If Board of Education, if the, for some reason the town of Jonesboro was not receptive to some of Mr. Bennett's recommendations, then I think that does create a, a concern and a decision point for the board.
So they're gonna dump it back over on us and we're gonna be the bad guys to say no?
I don't think the town of Jonesboro wants to dump it back on anybody. They wanna get it done.
They wanna go forward with that.
Is that, Mitch, is that, so, um, so they're gonna, when, so the county is gonna, they're gonna approve it first, then they're gonna hand it to us and say if we like it? Or, or we gonna, it's their lease?
Yeah, but I mean, somebody's question, I mean, Mr. McLean's question, when are we gonna see the lease? Well, I think you ought to be able to see the lease at the same time the county commissioners, to be honest. I don't know that it'll, I don't, I don't know whether, I don't know how that.
How can they know when we're leaving the document?
It doesn't matter, I don't know about that.
If ever a thing fell under the open branch.
Yeah, that's a man who's.
Question, Dr. Wagner, you mentioned a lease here at the time, a lease of twenty years. Is that not the case?
They talked about the length of the, the lease.
Such as?
I heard twenty years, twenty-five years, or thirty-year, was there thirty-eight?
Thirty-seven and a half years.
Yeah.
Ruled, the, the rule, you know, from, will do debt up to thirty-seven and a half years.
Is it not true, Mr. Mayor, that the Board of Education wouldn't take ownership until the lease expires?
Uh, there is a, there is a clause in the lease which allows an early termination of, 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 you know, buyout provision.
Right.
You'd have to pay off the rest of the debt.
It's gotta be paid off.
You know, for example, if you went thirty-seven and a half years, they've gotta have a thirty-seven and a half year lease because they've got, they, the town of Jonesboro has to have a guaranteed revenue stream to pay the bond on. Okay, so the lease and the bonds have to match up. If, for some reason, the Board of Education decided that they want to roll out of that at year twenty, you could, but you're gonna have to pay off that remaining seventeen years of principal, which would save you a bunch of interest.
The lease itself is not ours to approve nor sign. The inter-local agreement is ours to approve, negotiate, and sign.
Which you have, which we have.
Which we've done, we've done our part, I bet. But it sounds like it's going through changes.
It sounded like, we, and I wasn't here, but it sounded like we directed our, our board attorney to make some changes to that lease, so.
Well, there's still, there's still things out there in, in discussion tonight. We're heading in that direction on part of it. Everything is not covered in that inter-local agreement. It's, it's like I said to the, to the rest of the board a minute ago, standing in front of the McCannie Center, took the vest, said to me, I said, who's gonna mow the grass? He said, we are as long as we can. As, have you heard him say that?
No, but I understand where he's going.
As long as we can, we'll mow it.
Could look like Boog Creek, yeah.
There is that possibility.
Well, they still may.
Details are important.
Well, in some people's minds, they only solve them progress, but not in my mind.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adams, we appreciate you going.
You're welcome, sir.
We love you, Nick.
Thank you. WCA, follow that, Ms. Francis.
Ron Quill, join us! Uh, like to sit near the student section at the crockery. Third grade teacher, Hayden Chanley, playing Greer. Uh, if you'd ever wanna get hit by anybody, it wouldn't be playing Greer. He was as big as me when he was eight years old. I'm glad to hear that there's a plan to get rid of the bats and that the gym is going to reopen at Lamar. And, uh, thank you, the cheer. It was a cheer. Did a follow-up.
It did much better than me, Ms. Francis, as usual.
It was a smile.
Okay, everybody, round table. We're gonna let our senior, what, what? Okay, he needs to understand what we're doing, all right. Mr. Gangier, would you go ahead and start us, please?
Like I said earlier, our nurses are very important to our school system. So we had to get the report on that and see firsthand all the things they are doing. So it's awesome and I have to applaud Ms. Wagner, sharing that with the county commission as we try to possibly get the nurses some more money, so. That's all I got.
He's got. Mr. Uh, Jack, Flainer, sorry.
I'm as bad as.
You didn't say what you thought.
The high school said something else, but I'm looking.
Great meeting, I, I really appreciate the nurses come tonight. Ms. Wagner's done a, a heck of a job with them, got a good group. Can't believe the numbers that, that we saw tonight, couldn't believe it when she told me. But, uh, she's done a heck of a job in her department, done a great job getting kids back to school. There's gonna be missing one flu shot, so I don't know if we get any money for it, but my son decided he'd flip out, so he didn't get his flu shot there, so that's one we missed. But he does go by there, I think, once a week, gets a good hug and they tell him they love him and stuff. Maybe he helps somebody else, so. But appreciate everything we're doing. I, I would challenge y'all to read that five-year strategic plan and really take note of what's in there. And if we don't agree to it, let's not leave it in there just because that's what it needs to be. I mean, I know we got needs, you know, we've got several needs, but, uh, just letting it go by and not doing it is, is detrimental, in my opinion, if we don't believe in it. So, um, also too, the mowing stuff, I, I wish, it's just hard to, when seventy percent and may, maybe more, maybe less of our communities just drive by our schools and we're so proud of a thirty-million-dollar, uh, a thirty-million-dollar building and it looks bad because we keep mowing. It's just, I mean, you, there's no argument to that. And they don't care if it's the county's, they don't care if it's the schools. All they know is you're a school board member and you're supposed to take care of problems. And, uh, that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Day?
Um, good meeting, enjoyed it. Nurses were great, appreciate all they do as well. And I think, I know Mr. Flainer's concerned and I think it's all of our concern and we can never probably come up with funds we need to take care of everybody like we need to, but I think that we continue to strive forward and do our best to, do our best to fund everything we can. I think we really do need to make sure we pro, I know there's so many needs, that we prioritize exactly where we're at and what they are and how to continue to keep in focus on, don't forget about them, I guess is my thing. I know I tend to forget about them till they come up again and need to have them on the top of our, top of our list. But other than that, good meeting, appreciate y'all.
Oh, well, the fall branch, Ms. Pugh and the art students had a really, did a really good job and I liked that that they used it through their ethic and it was on respect. And Ms. Wagner, our school nurses provide services that are so valuable to our students and everybody in our system. Thank you. And welcome, Ron Keel, good job tonight. Appreciate you. Is that, did I get your name right?
Ron Keel, I think.
Ron Keel, okay, okay. And I'm gonna try to come to a game and watch, okay? Uh, and I'm still hoping that Jonesboro School is going to move forward and everyone can agree on a plan because this is what they need, but thank you.
Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ron Quill?
Ron Keel.
Ron Keel.
Ron Keel.
Ron Keel.
With a K?
Yeah.
Ron Keel, I'm sorry.
Ron Keel, he, Ron's gonna kill.
Attitude of your quality as an honorary board member of this board. I hope you are starting to understand the workings of the board and we get sidetracked sometimes and we get into micromanaging sometimes that we shouldn't do. But we think over a period of time you'll be able to see more of what we do and how we do it. We don't always agree, but we hope the outcome is acceptable to everybody that affects anyway. But welcome. Number two, Kelly, thank you for what you do and my utmost respect to all of our nurses and all that they do for our students and our staff and any of these other folks that just go walking in to get some COVID deals or whatever. We appreciate it, appreciate what y'all do for the students. I don't have a lot to say, but I've got a short email I wanna read and I'd like to get the director's comment. Got an email from somebody that simply said, "I would like to know why we were building new schools when we can't afford science books for the sixth grade. Science is a hard subject to learn, especially without science textbooks."
My comment would be well said.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Mr. Hands?
Welcome, Ron Keel, to the board. I'm sure you didn't think it would go this long, such a short agenda. But, uh, wanna thank Ms. Wagner for her job and all the school nurses. And enjoy the Fall District meeting. Todd, you did a good job along with the other TSA staff and all that.
Yeah, I forgot to say. I apologize. Is that all? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, sorry, I tried to listen to a little bit of live stream on all the nurse presentation and that kinda blew me away. I mean, just the, the volume of activity that y'all have. Been a long time since I've been in K through twelve as a, as a student, so I, I can, I guess, clinics get overrun. A lot of good things are happening in Washington County. I mean, I, you know, and I think there's a lot of, if we just wait and let the, let the folks that are working on the things on this Jonesboro project do their job, I think they will come back with a very defendable lease that can make it very affordable for the taxpayers of Washington County and provide our Jonesboro students with an excellent facility. Looking forward to going to Nashville, picking up some more intense VA stuff.
Your turn.
I don't like to repeat everybody, but, but I feel like the nurses do deserve a shout-out. Um, they're a wonderful asset to our schools. Um, they're certainly a need in our schools and they're very important to our students. My son told me that I could sign that tasty paper, but he wasn't eating snack peas again this year. So, just to let you know, we will be protecting his snack peas.
They're not on the schedule this year.
Well, I'll, that'll be glad for him to know, I'll tell him in the morning.
I love them. They're good.
Just telling you. And he eats everything, so.
I like them raw.
Um, I love the meaning behind their artwork, the fact that everybody has different opinions and, um, if anybody sees this board, that picture out there describes us perfectly. We all sit here and have nine different opinions, but yet we respect each other's opinions and we still get along. And so I just love the meaning of that picture and I think it just describes us as a whole. Um, I would also like to let you know that we have a former student that is running for Congress in Georgia. Uh, he's a GA four, so if you know anybody in that district, give them a shout and let them know that William Hastings will do a good job in, in their district. Oh, yes. Yes, so, yes, he is a Navy veteran. So, real, real thrilled about that, real impressed because, you know, he's gonna be president in ten years. That's the end of the land, but anyway.
You say he was a Navy veteran?
He's a Navy veteran.
They were hip to the right for him.
Yes, wonderful, wonderful kid, so that's all I have, sir.
Okay, now you've heard everybody, now it's your turn.
Um, it's an honor to be up here, a serious honor. I didn't see it happening and when the counselors came and told me that, thank you for this. I honestly didn't know what I was getting into, but going to the scope, I learned a lot. And being here, I'm becoming more familiar with how it works and how's everything going. I wish we could do this more often, this is honestly fun. I could care less if I have to postpone my homework. Um, seeing the impact that nurses have was really eye-opening because I don't really think about them on a daily or just in the year, actually. And just acknowledging them, that was, that was really something nice. And the, bringing the spotlight on vaping, that was a conversation that, I mean, really needs to be opened up because it's taking the high schools by storm and in a year, everyone hasn't. And it's, I'm happy the conversation's been opened up, but I hope everybody can do something about it. And it's, I'm happy the conversation's been opened up and I hope that we can do something about it.
Is that all? Mr. Flanery, do you have any kind of choice words you'd like to say to this board? Okay. Jennifer, you don't have on my cheat sheet any kind of dates. So, uh, so November's board meeting is when? December? And we go to Nashville on? Thirteenth? Thirteenth, okay. Good meeting. I'm going to take a cow for Kelly at the Lamar tomorrow in the morning at seven-thirty, so that's going to be a hard morning. It's going to be a red and white cow, it ain't going to be a black and white cow, so kids are going to say, why? But I want to thank her for getting the milk dispensers that we're trying to get into some schools. I'm going to try to get co-op or, or somebody to purchase some cups that will, the dispensers that they're going to put in in some of the schools is, is a, take your cup and put it up and get milk out of it. And we can buy, or if I can get somebody to donate the cups that is washable and they're hard to turn over. So, you know, they, they're, they're big at the bottom. They're a ten-ounce cup, so, but, uh, next month, I think Cindy. She's coming to speak to us next month.
She's going to track up Estes next month, with her alliance.
So she's going to come and present some stuff and, and these machines that we're getting, it's all free. So it's, you know, it ain't costly. Only thing, it will cost us if we need to buy some cups.
Is it a grant or a nothing?
It's grants. So, but we run over nineteen-hundred kids through the fire grounds last week. Mr. Flanery walked through and I was pleased to see him and he said that this was a good thing and I feel like it's a good thing that the Farm Bureau puts on. Mr. Day come through, but it's, it's eye-opening because kids don't know. They just, they just don't know. Thank you. I've known you for a long time, your sister, Estes and stuff, but she played ball with my daughters, right? So you're, you're a good young man. Trying to think. Mr. Flanery, anything else?
I'm sure we've got some.
I know. What?
I'm sorry, I'm pretty good.
I passed the six. I, I, I don't, what time is it? It's just nine-thirty, it's too early. We're not getting, getting older.